Okay. Looks like we have most everyone we need at this moment, so I would like to call to order the Manchester Select Board meeting of Tuesday, July 5th, 6:30 PM. So virtual meeting, we are being recorded via Zoom. And Debbie, do you record? No, they're being recorded on Zoom. And may I have a roll call vote, please, of all of the board members in attendance, Ann Harrison?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
And Becky Jakes. Okay, wonderful. I would, before we get started, I would just like to thank all the many, many volunteers and the Fourth of July Committee and Cheryl Marshall at Parks and Rec, who, from what I understand, had a fabulous Fourth of July celebration, which is not ever yet tomorrow. Oh, tonight?
Tonight.
They have music. Okay, we'll start with public comments on non-agenda items. I will, to keep things moving along, limit them to two minutes and very specifically items not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to say something?
Yes, this is Ron Skates.
Okay, Ron, yes, would you please state your address?
Yes, Ron Skates, 4 Boardman Avenue.
Thank you, Ron.
I want to thank you for taking the time to speak to me about the recent decision to not go along with the vote regarding the call center in downtown. I think that I, you were very kind to me and I appreciate the time. I think a case can be made for the call center and a case, I think, may be made against it. But what really has troubled me is that the board has gone against the will of the people. And I think one of the points you made to me was that there weren't that many people voting in the election. If that's the case, then why are you ceding to select people who were elected when the vote was the same for them in terms of total numbers? It seems like an inconsistency. It seems to me that you all were predisposed. And as I told you on the phone, my company was heavily involved with these kind of computer systems some years ago. We've never done business with the town of Manchester and I wouldn't propose that. But I believe that the warrant that was sent out was heavily overstated in favor of going to the regional center. And as you may know, there are a lot of people in the Baker administration who view the regional center as a failure. And it's not being well kept up and there are rumors that people are leaving it. That may or may not be true. My problem is, I have a real problem with the board going against the vote of the townspeople. You did not need to put that vote on the town. If you did, I have a hard time understanding why you didn't go along with it. In particular, I have a hard time understanding if the reason was that you have not a very big turnout, then how can you say that the two selectmen that were elected were also legitimate? That's my question to you. By the way, thank you for taking your time to talk to me. There's no personal animosity here. It just, I believe that democracies get in trouble when the people at the top vote against the majorities.
Thank you, Ron. I will address first point, which is that not that many showed up. I don't, I think that's not exactly what I said. I may have stated the percentage, which was 35% of the registered voters. And it's not that we went against that, but to repeat and reiterate what Greg said and actually put in a letter in the cricket, was it was one metric of many we looked at. And no, there was no way that we disregarded what people said. We took it into account. As far as having the non-binding vote goes, and I don't, I don't, we have talked about this quite a bit and I'm hoping that we can move beyond that to moving forward. Regarding the non-binding vote, that was not a unanimous vote, vote of the board. My concern at that time was that what would we do with a non-binding vote when the owner rests with the select board? And additionally, the information that we've been pouring over and deep diving into over many years, it's, as you know, having led a company, you get the information, you go back for more, you go back for more, and you go back for more. And also, as I stated, you, would you follow your board or would you follow what all your, or a portion of your shareholders said? Not that I'm trying to equate us with a corporation, but there is a bit of a comparison there. Then overstating the facts on the warrant, I would disagree with that respectfully. And I would say that the numbers were actually understated, if anything. And then rumors of the towns leaving. Rumors. And if anything, there are other towns looking to join. So on that note, I am going to go on. If you want to say something else, Ron, I'm going to go to other people. But we do need to move the meeting along, provided everybody is comfortable with what that having their concerns addressed.
Thank you. I appreciate letting me speak. I think that two issues are, is it the best thing for the town economically? As you propose or in terms of functionality? And the other is, my view is responsibility of the board to do what the citizens want. But I'll defer and I thank you very much for your time.
Okay, Ron, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, no one else. Well, we will go along to the chairman's report and thank you again, Ron.
Thank you for the time. I appreciate the courtesy and I appreciate the time you spent with me. It was time out of your personal time and it was very nice for you to do that. Thank you.
Well, and thank you for taking the time to, you know, be involved and concerned. That's the way it should be. So thank you. Greg, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I don't. I think, I think it's been said.
Okay, good. Then let's go ahead and move on to drought conditions. Has everybody had a chance to look at those? And Greg, are we able to put those up on the screen for people to look at? I should have asked about that earlier, so that's my fault. I apologize.
Let me see if I can quickly get to it.
And it's not, if you can't, that's not a problem. I can just sort of very quickly read over.
Why don't you do that while I work on? Why don't you go ahead and start that way and I'll see if I can get this up.
Okay. And I am bringing that up right now. So we have, here we are. Okay, so the town of Manchester is currently in a, I guess, stage two, and mine's, there we go. Level two in terms of drought conditions. And that, the state designates that as significant drought. They, it states that due to the, over three months of below normal rainfall, once again, we're in drought conditions. So the last drought was January through August of 21. And while our own water supply seems to be fine, I think, thank you, Greg. I think we are much better if we're prepared to implement some drought conditions. So if we are able, if you could scroll up a little bit.
Yeah, I'm trying to be. There we go.
There we go. I mean, and now the other way a little.
So this shows the four levels, level two, significant drought. We're in the eastern part of the state. So we are in that level two.
So I think that we can let, I see Chuck on there. And if Chuck wants to speak to this in terms of what our own water supply looks like at this point. But I think if we could put this on website in terms of when they, when the website says what you should do or what the state says what you should do. And if it gets any worse, then I think we can implement some of those measures. Does anybody on the board have comments about that? Okay. Chuck, did you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, I could say a couple of things, just, you know, you are looking at the state drought, which, you know, does, you know, state that the town is in a stage two. I will say, for our own water supply, that's not a metric within the state numbers. The state numbers are based on stream flow and, you know, several other factors. However, they didn't include actual water supply levels. So, you know, we do monitor that on a daily basis. Gravelly Pond right now is about a foot under full. You know, but that, as you said, we haven't had a lot of significant rain. And so, you know, we're down about a foot from full, but, you know, that foot has basically come down in the last month. So, you know, we've, we've seen that drop. You know, that doesn't take into account Lincoln Street well, which is our other main source of water. And that, you know, is running normally. We're not seeing significant drawdown in the well compared to, you know, this time at, you know, any other year. So while the number, you know, the metric is significant drought, our own system is a little bit more resilient than that. And we have not seen significant differentiation between this year's seasonal fluctuations and any other year. To put it in perspective, this time last year, we were at the exact same stage in our, in Gravelly Pond. And, you know, you, you might remember that last July, we had about a foot of rain. So we'd never really touched the drought metrics last year. So that, that could change this year. If we go another three months without significant rain, I, you know, we would definitely be implementing some more stringent things, but at this point, where, you know, our, our own supply is not in that state, I would say. But certainly, you know, the more information we can get out to the public about reducing in times of drought is, you know, well, time well spent.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Chuck. Any comment from the board?
Yes, Becky, can I say something?
Yes, John.
Yeah. I think we ought to, we ought to tell folks kind of where we are with regard to this level two situation, and at least alert them that they should be a little more responsible. I think everybody knows, we just have not had very much rain. And I think that we need to react to that, even though the water levels are pretty good. And Chuck feels they're probably mirroring what, what the situation was last year. I think there ought to be some sort of an article in the cricket or an announcement that people should be cognizant and conserve where they can. We just don't know how August is going to play out, or July.
Right, okay. Maybe what we could do is have, do something on the cricket, the website, and maybe the website or even in the tide could have a live link to the states. Either to the state, this website, or just this information that we're looking at right now. Ann?
I, I don't have a problem with telling people what the state is currently saying, but if there isn't actually a problem in town, I don't want to get a reputation for crying wolf, which I think would hurt us if things actually got worse. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody, any other board member, Kathy?
Yeah, I, I believe that we should just tell people where we're at. I think they can handle the information. Based on the state metrics, we're in a significant drought, but our current water supply is good. I mean, I, I think giving them accurate information is never a bad thing.
Yep, perfect. Okay. Brian?
Yeah, I'm on board. I think that just be mindful of where we're at right now, but there are no immediate reasons to be concerned, but just be cognizant of what's going on. I echo everything else. I echo everything that everyone else has said at this point.
Okay. Um, let's see. All right. Anyone, oh, Steve, all right. Are you speaking from Concom or as a citizen?
Let me speak as a citizen. This is Steve Gang at 12 Ashland Avenue. Thank you, Madam Chair. Very quick point, maybe more of a question, which is that Manchester is already pretty notable for a very high ratio of summer water usage overall to winter compared to virtually any other community in Massachusetts. We tend to be close to the top, if not there. So the question is, do, and maybe it's for Chuck or others, do we expect a feedback loop here? In other words, when everyone's garden and lawn is experiencing drought, will we experience significantly more drinking water usage for irrigation? Thank you.
So certainly the short answer is yes. As things get drier, our use goes up. Yeah, Becky, you're, you're breaking up on us.
Well, and if it, Chuck's on, you're on, you all are on.
Yeah, Becky, I wonder if you can
Oh, boy.
Close your video. That might help.
I was trying to have access to appointments, et cetera. But I guess I won't. Okay, is that any better?
Yeah, that is better.
Okay. All right. So recommendations. I think that what I'm hearing from the board is that, and everyone has spoken. Let me see if anybody else has a hand up. Okay, I don't see any other hands up. It seems consensus is that it doesn't hurt to put what the state is experiencing and saying, experiencing and saying of our region, but also be sure it's very clear that our region is, I mean, we in Manchester are doing okay at the moment, but we will continue to keep an eye on this. And if need be, then we can implement a variety of recommended measures. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Annual reappointments. And we can now lose that screen if you'd like, Greg.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so we have annual reappointments and bringing that up. Sorry, it's never easy trying to operate from far away without the usual items. Okay, I believe we have one, one, one-year appointment at this time.
We reappoint Gordon Brewster to the Downtown Improvement Project Committee.
Excellent. Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. So that was moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellata. Roll call vote, Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
And Ann Harrison?
Yes, we should give him our thanks.
Say it again?
We should give him our thanks.
Absolutely. And Becky Jakes says yes as well, with gratitude to Gordon. We have no two-year terms. So for the three-year terms, we have ending in 2025, we have Bike Head Committee with Freddie. And I really apologize what I'm doing to your name. Chakirtia. And then Cape Anne Regional Planning Committee, Emergency Response Coordinator Todd Fitzgerald, Conservation Commission, sorry, O-Season. I thought it was Sarah, but Council on Aging, George Nicholas, Gas Plumbing Inspector Dave Perrine, Open Space and Rec Committee, Olga Hayes, Parks and Rec Committee, Michael Coyne, and Carly Blaisdell, Seaside One Committee, Jeff Parker, Welcome to Manchester, Leslie Beatty, Winfield Field Committee, Michael Chapman, and James Maroney. May I have a motion?
Motion to move that whole slate of, how many was it, two-year terms?
Three years.
Yeah, three-year terms, yes.
Okay, second?
Second. Second.
Thank you. Moved by John Round, seconded by Kathy Bellata. Roll call vote, Ann Harrison? Am I freezing?
No, we got you.
No, we can hear you, Becky.
Okay, I think I lost Ann then, so. Roll call vote. Okay, thank you. John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Becky Jakes says yes. Okay, new licenses. All right. Starting with the one-day alcohol license for came, good golly, the Chamber of Connors, Commerce. Okay, for the Chamber of Commerce, for the one-day Festival by the Sea for a temporary wine and malt liquor license. For the Festival by the Sea event, Manchester, Mass. 60 Beach Street, Manchester by the Sea Mass, Saturday, August 6, 2022, from 12 noon to 5:30 PM. Area is to be fenced and bartenders must be certified. And this is Ken Reel for the Greater Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Becky. Do you want me to speak to this?
Do any board members have any questions?
No.
Okay. Do any, is there any public comment on this? Okay. Ken, if you'd like to, that's fine. Otherwise, I think we are ready to make a motion.
Thank you. Enough said.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Move to approve the application for a one-day wine and malt liquor license for the Festival by the Sea.
The Greater Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce on August. If I might make a friendly amendment, Ann?
You may read the whole thing. Or we may grant it that it's moved as written.
Okay, that's your motion to make.
Moved as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison as written, seconded by John Round. Ann Harrison?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Becky Jakes says yes, unanimous. Thank you all very much. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you. Have a great night. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is for the Used Car Dealer's License for Dean Collins. And Dean is here and raising his hand. Yes, and Dean, would you also just state your address, name and address, please?
Dean Collins, 13 Highwood Road.
Okay. Did you want to say something to this?
Just in a nutshell, just, it's something that I have done before, several years ago. And I'm getting older in age and going back to, trying to wind down a little bit. So this is just a course of business to slow things down in my career. Getting out of retail and going back to my roots. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask. I think in the letter, I kind of saw, I put everything up so everyone would understand it.
I, I did, and I actually do have some questions.
Go right ahead.
And the first one is with your Western Surety Company. The issue date is October 31, 2003.
Correct.
Is this something that never has to be renewed?
Oh, no, it gets renewed every three years. And if it ever is, in, if it's ever terminated, the town gets notified instantly.
Okay, so is the town notified when it's renewed or just when it is?
Just when it's, just when it's terminated. With, if it lapses, the town is notified that it was not renewed. So I checked with Debbie and the town has never been notified that it has not been renewed. So it's in good standing.
Okay, and my other question would be, if for some reason the dealers where you, the dealers' lots, where you take the cars, if for some reason they couldn't receive them, where is your other place to put the cars? Or do you have other places? You bring them up and they go straight to various dealers?
Yeah, essentially, they're already contracting me and they're accepting the cars prior to me even purchasing them. So it's not like there's a downtime. They're telling me, because I've been doing this for, ooh, 35 years now. They're telling me they're wants and needs, say like Acura PBD, for instance, BMW PBD, and the list goes on and on. And the minute I buy them, they just get trucked right to their lots. And then if they, if some odd chance there was an issue, it would just go right back to where it came from.
Okay. I'll just go straight with the board. Kathy Bellata?
So this is just a, basically, it's a, you're a virtual broker.
Correct. Yeah, there's not, nothing, nothing is, nothing except me on the computer or on the phone is happening at the premises. But in Massachusetts, the town needs to issue the license, correct?
Correct. Okay, thank you.
To wrap it in a nutshell, I don't want to deal with people. I just want to deal with the people I've been doing business with, yes.
Okay, Brian Solace?
No, I'm satisfied as long as there is no situation where a car or cars will be parked in his driveway.
Correct. By, uh, Brian?
Okay, Dean, I'm just going to jump in right now because just the way the meetings work to keep them organized, typically, comment goes to the chair. In this case, I'm fine with this, but just, just wait until everyone is done, please. Okay. John Round?
Yeah, I just have a, have a question you might ask Dean. So when was the last time he applied for this license? So I don't recall this license having necessarily come up in the past, but a lot of licenses come by us. And I, my understanding is you did this way back, maybe the first of 2003 or so. And now you haven't done it for a while and now you're back in here. And this license is good for just until the end of this year. Are we going to be seeing you again in six months?
Go ahead, Dean.
Yeah, no, yes, it's, it's a license that gets renewed every year, correct.
Okay. I'm just, Becky, do you recall?
No, I've never seen this. Okay, you?
Oh, it's, yeah, it's been a number of years. Perhaps Dean could answer that, but I, I don't recall in recent history.
I just don't call reviewing a used car dealer's license for you. And if this is a yearly thing and you've been doing it, well, I mean, you didn't do it last year maybe or the year before. I don't know.
Oh, no, no. No, I haven't done it in probably eight, eight years now. I did it from '03, '03 to, I want to say. I did it from 03, 03 to, I want to say maybe 13 or 14-ish maybe? I did it for about 10 years and then relocated, and then I'm just like, like I said, I'm trying to wind down now and going back to slowing things down.
Okay, thank you, well, those, those dates predate probably everybody here. So, all right, so we're seeing this and we'll be seeing you again, I guess.
Correct.
Okay. Ann Harrison? Ann?
She's frozen.
Okay, Debbie, did you want to say something?
No, I was just gonna say that I did, I saw the license from 2003, so we had it in the past.
Okay, great. Let's see, did we lose Ann? There she is, Ann, are you, did you have any comments?
No, I, I think everything I was curious about has been answered. I see no objection.
Okay. Then may I have a motion? And I would like to stipulate that in the motion, it state that no cars may be kept from, no cars from the business may be kept on the property at any time.
Okay, Becky, I'll make a motion to approve a used car dealer's license for Dean Collins. And certainly with the stipulation that no vehicles per se will be physically located here in town, or 13 Highwood Road, anyway.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by John Round, seconded Brian Solacy, roll call, vote.
Can I, can I make a comment on the? John's motion has two alternatives. One is in town and the other is at 13 Highwood Road. And I would prefer to vote on one or the other of those, preferably no cars be physically located in the town of Manchester by the Sea. Can you accept that as a, as an amendment?
I, I can, I can accept that, but I would, is that, is that okay with, with Mr. Collins?
Oh, absolutely, like I said, the, my last, my previous license said no vehicles stored or displayed on the premises. Obviously, except for if I happen to have a car, I'll be driving a car myself, of course, to get back and forth, you know, to get in and around, but yeah, I'm fine because I'm not purchasing any property to store vehicles in Manchester.
So I will modify, it'll, it'll be broadened to be the town of Manchester by the Sea.
Okay, so you accept the friendly amendment, Brian, do you second?
I do.
Okay, roll call, vote, Ann Harrison?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Balata?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes, okay, thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
Thank you, taxi cab livery license for Richard Philpot. And thank you for this, Mr. Philpot, I do have a few questions. Is there any type of insurance necessary for this? If so, I didn't see anything.
Yes, yes, there is, I, I do have insurance, I didn't submit, didn't ask me to submit my insurance, but I can get the town a certificate of insurance. If, if, if you need one.
I'm, I'm personally not sure of that. Debbie, do you know anything about that?
No, I, this is the first taxi cab that I've seen in Manchester, and typically in Rockport, they, they do give insurances, so if he can supply that, that would be great.
Yeah, I mean, this is not a taxi cab, it's a livery service, but same kind of thing, yeah.
Yeah, and, and just the, the proof of liability insurance would be good to have on record.
Sure.
Kathy, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Brian?
No, I'm good.
John Round?
I'm fine, Becky.
Ann Harrison?
Can we approve it subject to the applicant providing certificate of insurance?
Liability insurance.
Liability.
I don't see why not.
No, you can, that's fine.
Okay. Did you make the motion?
I move to approve the application for a taxi cab private livery license for Richard F. Philpot, subject to his providing the town with a certificate of liability insurance.
Friendly amendment, if I may, for the Business by the Sea Transportation LLC.
That's fine.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote, actually motion made by Ann Harrison, seconded by John Round, roll call, vote, Ann Harrison?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Balata?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes too. Thank you very much, Mr. Philpot.
Thank you all very much, and Debbie, I'll drop that certificate off to you in the next couple of days.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we move on to reserve fund requests. And did everybody have a chance to look these over? Okay, Greg, are you going to be speaking to those?
Certainly can, happy to answer any questions, so the first three are reserve fund transfers, so this is the reserve fund that the Finance Committee has responsibility for. As part of the budget process, they're given a set amount of money to to cover unanticipated expenses. And so these three remaining requests would use up their, their full amount. And the, the Finance Committee has, has voted to approve these transfers. So the first one is for $93,000 for fire department salaries. Second is for $68, 48 for election expenses. And the last one is $35,000 for various legal expenses. Fire department salaries, the primary culprit for the overages and the need for the extra money is having one firefighter out for an extended period on injury with some health issues, and then a second firefighter for a shorter time, but combined has meant that we've been having to backfill their positions for, for a good portion of the year.
Ann, did you have a question about that?
My question is in the boilerplate. It says that the rest request must be made and transfer voted before any expenditure in excess of appropriation is incurred. And this looks to me as if we are backfilling. And should we change the form? Should we change our procedure? Should we just ignore the whole thing?
Well, best, best to change the form, so we often, we are often playing catch-up on some of these expenditures.
So how do we change the form? Is that?
Yeah, that's our internal form, so we just can do some changing of wording there, that's, is that necessarily prior to incurring of the expense?
Okay. Any other question on these? Okay.
Actually, I have, I have one more question.
Yep.
On the oh, of 40B, the legal. The account is currently at negative $36,000 and change. And you're requesting $35,000, which still leaves the account negative. Is that because of the limits of the available funds?
Well, so there are additional legal funds in, in the the interdepartmental transfers, so you see an additional 8,300 being requested in number two, in the interdepartmental transfers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comment on those.
Move to approve the first, the transfers from reserve fund for fire salaries, election and professional services and legal and professional services, as written.
Second.
Okay, thank you, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Balata, roll call, vote, Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Balata?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. Okay, now we move to the interdepartmental transfers. It was, my questions were just sort of how the moves are determined. For example, you're moving health insurance to IT expenses under number five, how, how does that? How is that determined?
So it's, it's basically identifying where there are some excess funds. And as long as they are within the general category of general government for this, then you can, you can move within. So it's basically, what's the deficit that a particular account has? And identifying a fund within the broader general account that has some excess funds and taking the excess funds to that, so there's no, there's no other magic besides that.
Right.
It's, it's identifying where there's some freed up dollars that aren't needed and where those dollars are needed.
Okay, my other question pertains to number four, where it's regarding to police salaries and the OT costs higher, it said that there was a letter from Todd regarding that, and I didn't see that letter.
Oh, that wasn't attached perhaps to the request. So it was, it was just a, it was detailing those expenses, and again, primarily caused by a long-term extended paid, paid leave absence.
Okay, all right, thank you. Kathy, you've got your hand up?
Yes, I just had a question on the, I think it's number six, it's the 8,000 for the additional costs to for the parking stickers. And I was wondering if you could explain what additional costs were incurred? Because although I was not a member of the board at the time, I did happen to attend the meeting where this process change was approved. And if I recall, it was presented as an efficiency. And I'm not accustomed to efficiencies that cost more money. So I just, so there's a disconnect here in my head, and I, I would appreciate some type of additional info.
Sure, so, so there was some additional cost incurred to fulfill in particular, the, the way we did the, the stickers this year, I think there may be a less expensive way to do it going forward rather than having an outside source provide all the fulfillment of those stickers, I believe we can do a little bit more in-house. But the efficiencies were, were not in cost, but in, in freeing up staff time. So it, it was a significant time saver for staff and allowed the clerk's office in particular to to focus on their other duties, which were falling behind during a typical spring, early summer crunch when we're trying to get all the beach tags and car stickers out to people.
So was the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So was the, this additional cost, is it recurring? Or was this a one-time investment?
It would be recurring if we continue to do it the same way.
Okay, so I guess what I would just suggest, and I, I'm not objecting to the transfer, but I would suggest that when we start our new conversations around the next budget season, we confirm our definitions of what constitutes an efficiency. Because if the total cost of a service is going up, while we may be saving somebody some time, you know, there, I would not brand this as an efficiency, I would brand it as a, you know, perhaps an investment in a faster service or something, but efficiencies usually mean you're gonna do the more work, you're gonna absorb more work with the same resources or less. Or you might realize an actual cost savings, et cetera. So I just think going forward, we, we would want to make sure we've got our definitions straight so that we don't misrepresent what, what is ultimately going to happen when we change a process or a service.
Nope, that makes sense.
Thank you Kathy, Ann Harrison?
My recollection is that when we voted to change the way stickers were delivered, it was presented as the stickers would go out with the excise tax bills. And therefore, they would, there would be a cost saving because there would not be the additional separate mailing. And my question is why, when was it decided to do a separate mailing and why?
Yeah, we, we simply missed the deadline for the excise tax mailing. So we had to do a separate, separate effort, so that was one reason why we did not obtain the efficiencies that we had originally anticipated.
Thank you.
John Round?
Yeah, so I guess in, in a follow-up to that, Greg, can we assume that this coming year, we will make the excise tax envelopes and we'll save all of that postage? Can we make that assumption?
That certainly would be the goal, we, we need to review the whole process and to make sure that we've got it
Right.
lined up correctly.
I don't know how many cars are involved, but it's gotta be a lot, like thousands and thousands, so it seems to me that there'd be some savings there. So if, if, if I understand this whole thing in general, in terms of presenting the financials at the end of the year, you've got your budget and you've got your actuals. And in some of these instances, based upon what's said here, some of these actuals are gonna be over the budget, some are gonna be under, but if you would total them up, it would be more or less come up to the total that you've got here, which I assume is kind of a wash or maybe a little bit under budget, because I think you said, Greg, we're gonna run a little under budget this year. Is this a correct assumption of how this is all gonna look?
Yes, so even though there, this list of, of transfers that are needed, overall, the budget is coming under projection and our, our income is higher than projected, so we are ending the year in the black, if you will.
Right, right.
And it'll, those, the, those excess funds roll into the general fund balance of the town.
Right, it seems to me, if you're a market, you said, well, this budget is under, this budget is over, does it make any difference? Because at the end, you've got one big pot of money and you're paying bills. And you just want to be at or below budget at the end of the year. You've, you've picked specific types of accounts where you've said, we're gonna transfer the, the under budget margin from one to the excess need for another. You're just matching things up there, is that a, I don't know how county works, but I assume that's an internal accounting issue.
Right, and like I say, there's, there's no real magic to picking health insurance for covering X, Y, and Z, it just, there's, there's, there were
There's money there.
There's money there, and then we, we are tapping it to pay for, you know, a handful of expenditures that went over that particular line, so we're
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make it clear.
Thank you, John. So Greg, just to reiterate, or just to confirm that when it's, it's being an interdepartmental transfer, it's, it's not as if we're taking something from police salaries and putting it into Parks and Rec.
Correct.
Brian, any comments?
No, I think it's, I think we're
No, I think it's, I think we're well covered at this point. We're just moving with.
Then may I have a motion, please? To approve the interdepartmental transfers?
I'll make, I'll, I'll make the motion, Becky, to approve the interdepartmental transfers as listed.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Okay, motion moved by John Round, seconded by Ann Harrison. Roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. Thank you very much. Okay. So now we are at the dispatch late and late. We're at the dispatch update a little late. Greg, do you want to take this?
Sure. So since your, your vote to move to the center, we, we contacted North Shore Regional 911 and they will take an official vote of their board on July 7th, a couple of nights from now. And once, once the board of the center has, which is comprised of the, the member communities, once they ratify us joining the center, the state will then send out to us an intermunicipal agreement very similar to what you've seen in previous, in previous meetings. And so with that, with your vote and, and with that intermunicipal agreement, that is something that Becky as chair and myself as, as town administrator would sign on your behalf. And, and that officially gets the ball rolling. The two chiefs, the two chiefs that I met with center staff last week, they are moving forward with lining up the various equipment procurement needs. There's various leads, lead time with those equipment needs. So we were verifying what exact equipment was in the feasibility study, making sure that the numbers are accurate and doing any necessary updating. Review the various equipment needs and, and what that equipment will do. Also talked about the recording management software that the dispatch center uses. It's, it's, it's called IMC, the company that makes this particular software. And that'll be a change for us. And, and so we were just going over some of the details of the, of the functions of that software and making sure it was going to be meeting our needs. And, and both chiefs have verified that indeed they are comfortable with, with that software. So that, that'll move forward. We talked to the center, you know, about how they could help us in transition. We are anxious to obviously keep, keep our current dispatchers on as, as long as possible. We hope that by offering them an incentive to do so, that that'll be helpful to them. And we also talked to the center about them hosting some open houses for our current dispatchers, because we certainly would encourage them to explore employment with the, with the center. So we will be setting that up for them if they want to take advantage of that and we'll certainly encourage them to do so. So that's, that's the short, sort of short and sweet update. We are talking to the center again about some alternatives for transitioning to them in terms of how quickly it can happen, different scenarios. But we will be getting, we need more information on the details of that and we'll be getting that to you in what will be regular meeting updates going forward.
Hey, thank you, Greg. John Round, any questions or comments?
Uh, maybe just a, a question, Greg, a little more clarification. I, I know that you met with the dispatchers and you're going to see how things evolve. Is there a plan B at this point or are we just going to see how things evolve and plan B will come up at a later date?
Oh, we're, we're pretty optimistic, a, a new plan B, but I, I'd like to nail down some of the details before going into a lot of specifics on that.
Sure.
But I, but I am, I am optimistic that we, we do have a fallback position if, if our dispatchers decide that they, they have better opportunities elsewhere sooner than, than we will be ready to go a hundred percent to the center.
Okay. I may ask that question again.
Yep, yep. No, and hopefully I'll be able to, yeah, hopefully I'll be able to give you a, a more definitive update on that. I, I should be able to very soon.
Fine.
Okay, Brian Solacy?
No, I think that it was covered pretty well. I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with what I hear.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Bellata?
Yeah, just one kind of comment. So since it was a board decision to join the regional center, it, it's my opinion that it should be a board decision if there is any desire to deviate from the services that the center offers. So in the feasibility study, there were a couple of instances where we thought we might want to use a different software or, you know, service than the board off, than the regional center offers. And I would just suggest that if, Greg, if you or the chiefs feel that that is necessary to deviate in some way from their common processes, technologies and tools, that you bring those to the board for, you know, in advance of making that final decision. Okay, because anytime there's variation introduced into a shared service, it winds up costing everybody more somewhere down the line and it winds up adding complexity to any future process changes or upgrades. So I would just ask that the team, you know, bring those issues, pros and cons to the board before a final decision is made. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, sure. Happy to.
And Kathy, to that point, I mean, it's even though Greg and I are the ones who sign, I, I, it, it would have all board eyes on it before that anyway. Okay, Ann Harrison?
No, with the, with the caveat that Kathy suggested, um, this is, this is fine.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you for the update. And I guess we can move on to the special town meeting date. And I see we have Alan. Good evening. We have the two dates that are being proposed, one of which is Monday, October 24th, the other is Monday, November 14th. My understanding is that it would be more helpful for Diane if we could do the later date after the fall state elections. And we had polled the planning board, or the planning board had discussed it and opted for October, the October date. However, I did send out an email just asking to, you know, why that date was chosen and if they had any problem with the later date. There were five from whom I heard and they all, and we all, and this was all done separately, so it was not group email. But they were equally comfortable with November 14th. So Greg, did you or Alan want to speak to this?
I'm, yeah, I'm pretty good with what you just summarized. This is obviously the postponement from the June town meeting. The, the focus will be on the proposed zoning changes that the planning board has been working on. And as, as you indicated, the planning board talked about their preferred date. As you say, I think they're comfortable with either one. They have a slight preference for the 24th. Having some, some discussion, I think, about Veterans Day being November 11th, the Friday before, and whether or not people would be traveling. But Monday, the 14th is a regular school day. It's, it's sort of a regular day all around. I, I don't, I don't think we, we lose a large population to, to travel over the veterans, over Veterans Day and, and the weekend. So I, I personally, I'm comfortable with either one. So I don't know if Alan would like to speak to, speak to it.
Personally, I can do either one. I, I think I may have a rare disagreement with Greg in that I think with the 11th being Veterans Day and a long weekend, potentially people will be traveling and, and may, may not be able to be there on Monday because they have long weekend plans. So I think I have, I, I would suggest that the 24th might be preferable just in terms of attendance.
Okay, comments from the board? Let's start with Kathy Bellata.
Um, I honestly have no preference as to the date.
Okay, thank you. Ann Harrison?
I'm having trouble with my connection and I missed most of what Alan said. I go with whatever Alan says.
I suggested December 25th, so I'm glad you.
Alan likes the 24th as opposed to November 14th.
I think we may lose some people because of the long weekend following Veterans Day.
Okay, Brian Solacy?
Although I don't have a problem either one, I'm respectful. I'm going to respect the clerk's request. And if I had a preference, I would go the November date.
Okay, thank you. John Round?
I'm, I'm comfortable with either date and I, I realize it's a long weekend on November, with November 11th. But this is an evening meeting and if people are coming back on Monday, let's hope they get home on time and the airlines aren't running behind. But I'm good with either one.
Okay, and I, I, I think that, that in terms of both planning board and, and the town clerk, as much as I typically would like to defer to Alan and his expertise and experience, I, I think I would opt for November 14th, which gives the planning board even a little bit more time. I know they've been really hard at it, but a little bit more time for more information might be helpful. So with that said, do I have a motion for a date?
I, I move to schedule the fall town meeting for Monday, the evening of Monday, November 14th.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. It was moved by Kathy Bellata, seconded by Brian Solacy. Roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. So there we have it. Fall town meeting, Monday evening, November 14th. All right. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Night. Somewhere other than here. Okay, board and committee updates. That brings us to the Board of Health.
Hi, Becky.
Hello, Paula. How are you today?
Great, thank you. I'll introduce myself as a couple of new select board members that I have not had the pleasure of meeting. My name is Paula Polofilius. I'm the co-chair of the Board of Health. And Peter Colaruso, who is also in the meeting, is, is here to help me present this opportunity to you. We are about to endeavor into hiring a full-time health agent. The Board of Health has not had a, a health agent for quite some years. I was, I was in the Board of Health on and off for approximately eight or nine years during the 1990s and I've been back on the Board of Health again for the past five or six years. So I, I have the benefit of having the experience from then and now. And back in the 1990s, we did have a health agent. The health agent was shared with Essex. And at that time, Essex was not under DEP order to, to have a full-time health agent. So it was, it was a part-time, part-time position for both communities. And there were a few other things that happened back in the 1990s. The Board of Health was, and there's, there's reasons why I'm giving you this background and I will circle around and it will all make sense when I'm finished. So thank you for tolerating all this factual, historical information. So the Board of Health was once a three-member elected board and there was difficulty getting quorum sometimes with a three-member board. And the, the decision was made way back when to make it a five-member appointed board. So there would be a, a better ratio, I guess, of, of meeting members being able to attend and having a quorum and getting the work of the Board of Health completed. And also in the, in the late 1990s, the town adopted a, a home rule petition. And these factors now are, are affecting what's happening in the Board of Health now. So when, when the Board of Health doesn't have a health agent, it also does not have a department head. So the Board of Health has been operating without a department head for many, many years. And the way that it has been operating is that the Board of Health has two sides. It has what we call the land side, which deals with when building permits come through the office and a, a home that's being built or renovated has a septic system. The Board of Health is the, the town board that reviews the plans. We have an engineer that subcontracted that reviews the plans, whether it's for septic or wells or, you know, emergency sewer connection or the, the engineer goes out and does site visits to witness test pits to inspect the system being built to make sure that it complies with the plans that were given to the Board of Health. Same with well drilling. And then we also have the public health side of the Board of Health. So we, we do the inspections for the restaurants. We inspect the pools, we inspect summer camps. We, of course, you know, COVID has been a big piece of what the Board of Health has been working with for the past couple of years. And that is also another person, a different person that subcontracted. And above five or six years ago, the fact that we didn't have a department head came, came, became a, a, a bigger issue for the board. And what we've been trying to do is work towards getting a department head and hiring a full-time health agent. So the finance committee did approve the funds for us to hire a full-time health agent. And now that we have to advertise for that health agent, what we're struggling with is who the health agent reports to. Because state law, and while we were in our, doing our research to learn about the Board of Health and the powers that the Board of Health has and the way that most boards of health operate, a, an, an executive director and senior attorney for the Massachusetts Association of Health Boards had told us that the, our Board of Health has the state law that gives us the power to hire staff, manage staff, fire staff if need be. And that is ultimately what we would like to do. But because the town of Manchester by the Sea has a home rule petition, the home rule petition. But because the town of Manchester by the Sea has a home rule petition, the home rule petition, the way that that works is that the town administrator manages the employees. And unless the board is an elected board, they, they are not supposed to be managing the employees. So because we are no longer an elected board and because the town has a home rule petition, we keep bumping heads with what the state is telling us we have the authority to do and what the town is telling us we have the authority to do. And what, what we want to do is try to clarify this so that we can properly advertise for a health agent. We, we really need to have the chain of command very clearly stated because we want to have the proper management structure for this new employee to be able to work with and understand. And you know, we want to represent our, the position properly. So aside from, aside from either becoming an elected board or getting a special act of legislature to change our home rule petition, the, the only other thing we can do is develop a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Health and the Select Board to be able to, for the Board of Health to be able to hire and manage the staff of the health agent and whatever, and public health nurse and the admin. So we're, we're coming to you so that we can try to hammer out this memorandum of understanding so that we can get to a place where we can move forward. And Peter, if I've missed anything, or if you think that I have, you know, missed any details or need to reorganize what I've said, please jump in.
Well, I believe it's the Select Board that ended up giving us the money. So we need to give credit where credit's due for the hiring of the health agent. But three years ago, I was, my first term on the Health Board, I met with Greg to introduce myself. And he expressed his concern about not having a department head. And we together tried to explore various alternatives. And it just came down to, you can't have responsibility without authority. And having the Health Department report to another department in the town, whoever that was. I think Greg can correct me if I'm wrong. We were looking at council and aging as a possibility and the DPW as a possibility. I mean, we couldn't have made it more complex if we tried unless we included having the Select Board okay every decision. For example, if the Essex mosquito control tells us you got, you know, 19 case of mosquitoes trapped and there's 19 of them with triple E, you need to spray, we would have to then go to the department head and say, we've been told it has to spray. Then they'd have to go to, I mean, the staff at the Health Department would have to go to the department head to tell them that we need to spray. We'd have to go to the Board of Health and then we would have to vote yes. We'd have to go all the way back. We could make it a little more complicated by having the Select Board with a vote in there too. But it's just, it's, it's, I was going to say, it's not the way to run an airlines, but maybe that's the way they're running the airlines. I don't know. So we need some, some direction. Many towns kind of split the, the responsibility, which we are more than happy to do. The, the administrative, you know, end of it is handled by the town. That's great. We don't want to get involved in that. We have enough things on our plate. But we'd like to be able to go to this health agent and say, hey, we need you to do this. We need you to do that. And then know the complexity of the situation and then know how well they did. I, I, I don't know an alternative and if you folks can share your experience and give us some guidance for an alternative, we'd be more than glad to consider it.
Oh, thank you, Peter, very much. And thank you, Paula. I would like to say that I, I wish we had the list of all the responsibilities that fall on the shoulders of the Board of Health to put up because it's a pretty extensive one. And I do have some things to say, but before I do, I'm going to let Greg respond and then I'd like to go through the board members. Greg?
Sure. So, so yeah, I think both Paula and Peter gave a very good summary of where things are at. And I think working on a memorandum of understanding makes a lot of sense and to spell out, you know, the various roles and responsibilities and making sure that there are good lines of communications always flowing back and forth. To, to me, that's the key. And with that, I think we can be successful. Peter's correct in saying that many towns will have it so that the health agent basically reports to the Board of Health for matters of policy and, and health directives. And that the town manager, town administrator is responsible for, you know, your, your administrative functions, personnel policy that the health agent would fall under, pay scale, benefits, all of those sort of nitty gritty administrative details. So I think that, that division, like I say, it, it has worked pretty well in other communities. And I think we could, we could put something in place that would be very similar. There's some examples of how it's worded, different job descriptions, and we could certainly borrow from what other communities have, have already written. So I think it's, it's sort of a two-step process. One is to come to agreement on, on an MOU, memorandum of understanding between the selectmen and the, and the Board of Health. We have a draft that certainly can be fine-tuned. I'm open to suggested edits from anybody for that. And then the second aspect is putting together that, the final pieces of the job description that would have that division of, of oversight so that we can, for the Board of Health, keep that out on the street and get, get going on interviewing candidates and hopefully making a selection.
Thank you, Greg. I'm Kathy Bellata.
Yes, thanks Becky. Yeah, so this is actually a very common situation outside of municipal government. It's called dual reporting or, or matrix being a part of a, a matrix organization. So I think, first of all, I want to thank Paula for the wonderful history that was very succinct. And it provided a lot of value to me as a new board member. So thank you for that. But this is really common and I think Greg outlined exactly right the way it's, it's normally done in, in the corporate world is you have an employee who is a dual report. They have a homeroom, an administrative homeroom where that leader will take care of their personnel, setting the goals, performance reviews, signing off on time cards, et cetera. But the, you know, it's a, it's a cooperative, collaborative relationship with the peer organization, in this case, the Board of Health, right, to set those goals and to, you know, Greg would get input from the Board of Health in order to conduct the, you know, the performance review, et cetera. So I think this is a very common thing that happens outside of municipal government. I think Greg has it outlined very well in his comments. And the only suggestion I would have is with respect to the memorandum of understanding is rather than one long list of verbiage on how, you know, on what the understanding is, I would separate it into two sections. Here are the specific responsibilities that the health agent will report to the Board of Health on. And here are the, a second section. Here are the specific things that the board, health agent will respond to the town administrator on. So just visually making it crystal clear, that visual separation will, will help a great deal. But I, I think just Greg outlined exactly the way these things normally work.
I just have one question about, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Paula.
Oh, okay. So if the Board of Health is hiring this health agent, would the health agent report to the Board, Board of Health?
So Becky, I'm not sure if that question was directed to Greg.
That is that, Paula, is that something you're saying, you're asking Kathy to clarify based on the two sections?
Well, if, yes, if the Board of Health is the board that is hiring this individual or whatever, whatever employee the Board of Health has, does the Board of Health, what I would like to understand is if the Board of Health is hiring this person, does the Board of Health also responsible? I would, I would like to think the Board of Health would be responsible for their performance review. And also, you know, whether they would continue to be employed by the town based on their performance.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah. So I'm, once again, this is a, you have to think of this as a, as a team effort, right? So it would be my expectation that if the, you know, administer, the way these things normally work is administratively, the person typically, whoever signs the time card is the one who has quote unquote hired the person. However, this is, the person is being hired for a specific domain expertise, which would certainly be under the Board of Health. And, and it, it's a very difficult, it's an uncomfortable thing to kind of, the first time you do it, to cooperate on, on a hiring decision, cooperate on a performance review, set goals, et cetera. But these things typically are not as difficult as they may seem at the outset. And the cardinal rule is whoever signs the time card is the one that hires and fires. But it is certainly a joint decision, right? Because if, if the person has responsibility in two different areas, both leaders typically, you would want them to agree. So that, and I'm sure if that helps or confuses you more, but typically whoever is signing on the dotted line that this person has worked and gets paid is, is the one that's ultimately responsible for the hire. But certainly if, if in this specific example, I can't imagine Greg wanting to keep on a health agent who wasn't performing well in the eyes of the Board of Health. I just can't imagine that scenario.
Okay, what I'm going to do, Paula, is go around to the other members of the Select Board. And, and I do have some things on that as well. But I would say that Greg, if there's a clarification from that, that one of us says that you feel you need to make a clarification on before it goes to Paula, feel, please do that.
So I guess just, we already have some examples where I think it's working pretty well. So the, the library trustees and, and I jointly interviewed and hired the new library director when, when that changeover occurred. The Planning Board. And, and I, when we hired a town planner, that was a, was a joint effort. Actually, I think Becky, you were on the Planning Board at the time when we did that. And I think you were involved in that process. So I think we do have some examples where, where it has worked well. And, and, and I would agree with Kathy that I would, I would see it as a, as a joint effort and, and would, would strive to reach consensus with the Board of Health and, and myself as we, as we move forward.
Thank you.
Can I, Greg? Madam Champion, please.
What, what I'm trying to keep from doing, Peter, is I'm, I'd like to hear from the board. And, and, and then we'll come back to you and Paula for sure. So just, I know, I have to write things down or maybe they don't come back to me. So go ahead. Yep, we'll come back, Peter. Thank you. Brian Solacy?
Yeah. To Greg's point, the model is misplaced. And I don't see why we, we have to deviate from that. I think as long as it's consistent with the board and the ultimate, I guess the ultimate authority is still with Greg as an, as a town employee. But he works quietly and he consents. It's not, I, I would see, continue that, that model in this particular case.
Thank you, Brian. John Round?
Yes, Becky, thank you. It's all, excuse me. It's all going to come down to this memorandum of understanding. I, I, I can see that. We're all in possession of this note that came from KP Law kind of advising us on that. In the end, they just said, hey, the, you know, the Select Board, the town administrator and the Board of Health to get together, who's going to be in charge of what and where there's going to be collaboration. So long as that's written down, I think things should work out. One thing that's crossing my mind here, and Becky, you had brought this up earlier. We did at one point, a few months or so ago, get a list of everything the Board of Health does. And it's a very diverse list. And there must be about 100 things on it, really falling into the parts of medical, public health and kind of construction. They're all very diverse types of things. And I'm not sure when you advertise for this position, a, a person can't know everything here. And there may have to be some tailoring based upon what they can and can, what they know and they do not know. Because it's such a diverse group of responsibilities. So there may be some tweaking to the, to the memorandum of understanding based upon who winds up in the position. So those are my comments.
Thank you, John. Anne Harrison?
I, I certainly agree with Kathy that the matrix management model is common in industry. And with a clear understanding of which report goes, what activities are under which supervisor, it works, it can work very well, freeing. Well, in my case, it was technical leadership from bookkeeping. And the technical leaders were delighted not to have the bookkeeping. So I, I agree, we need to have, there needs to be a clear understanding of what part goes where. But I think it's, it's workable that way.
Thank you, Anne. And, and my comments before I go back to you, Paula and Peter. I, I think, you know, based on what we've been advised by town council who's been in, in touch with the DPH attorney, Department of Public Health Attorney. It's, it's pretty clear what the responsibilities are in terms of, of oversight. And I personally am reluctant to have the administrative oversight for one department be moved. But I also recognize that, that the department, the Board of Health does have to function in an independent manner. So I respect that. And, and to what everybody else has said, it's going to boil down to the MOU, the memorandum of understanding. I, I had one in, in, before we get to that, Paula and Peter, what would you all thoughts on what people have said?
Paula, may I go before you, Paula?
Yes, please do.
Okay. Personally, I have no interest whatsoever in any administrative tasks. Greg, you can deal with the union. You can deal with a town policy, personal policy book. God bless you. Have at it.
That's nice of you, Peter.
Thanks, Peter. Very generous.
You know, I've, I've, I've been, I've been redirecting underperforming companies for longer than many of you young ladies have been alive. So I'm So I'm well aware of all of that. I would ask that if you're gonna use a model, that you find a model for other health departments, because we do have that proviso, Greg, about, um, the, the Chinese wall to, to, or the perception of the town management influencing public health decisions, which the Department of Public Health gets very nervous about. So if we can, we can do something with that, other, what other towns are doing, that's fine. And I was confused with the term, um, the day-to-day operations. I don't know what that means. Technically, I'm not saying you're, you would, but hopefully we'll get a document that will outlive all of us, uh, or at least me. Does that mean if, if on a Monday morning, you, you could take the whole health department and reassign them to another department? So we would be, you know, captains without a ship, so to speak. So I really need some, personally, some clarification on what that means. How do we, how do we, and we don't have to answer that now, obviously, but, um.
So, so a quick example perhaps might help. And so, yeah, first of all, I, I agree that we, we look at, um, other health departments and their structure and their job descriptions and, and how they describe the super supervision provided. I've got three or four that I think are good, good examples and you probably have your own. So we can take a look at those. But for example, so the board says, we want to have, you know, COVID clinics. And that's a directive. And then, um, the, the health agent is responsible for carrying that out. And if the health agent is, is, is faltering, and if I see that first, I would say, wait a minute, here, we, we need to make sure we're, we're doing this correctly and contact the Board of Health and say, I think we've got some challenges here we need to work through. Or, or conversely, you know, you ask the health agent to put those COVID clinics in place and he's, he or she is doing a wonderful job. And, and I haven't been told that, you're gonna let me know that. Greg, this is really working well and he's, and the health agent is doing a, a really good job here, that you need to be aware of it. So I mean, that's.
I'm, I'm sure you get many a phone calls all day long, giving you the opinion of all kinds of stuff that's done, so, um, would certainly keep you in the loop. But, uh, I'm sure you would hear things, good or bad, long before we do.
Peter, you can rest assured, not only is it many phone calls, it's many emails and, and walk-ins and whatever for Greg.
Yeah, well, I wasn't exactly popular when we asked for masking, so, you know, I understand it.
Yep. Paula, did you have anything to add to that?
Only that, when we boil down the memorandum, memorandum of understanding, that it's the board members, we're, we meet twice a month, we're in the office weekly, we're very much in tune with what the staff is doing. So we want to be able to, uh, continue to guide the staff and, and, if there's a, if there's a problem, we, we wanna be able to react to that problem. And we, we would like to be able to, if we're going to hire the staff and, we would like to be able to review, review the staff and, and really be, be in charge with the staff. And I know it's a cooperative thing, but I think, I think that we're gonna know pretty quickly if something's not working out and we wanna be able to react to it quickly also.
So are you saying that, and, and, you know, are you saying that you don't feel you'd be able to react to that quickly by going to Greg? With a concern?
I just want the memorandum of understanding to be clear that it's a joint effort.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I just was kind of was, wasn't clear on where you were going with that. Okay, thank you for that. I did have a question on number six under, um, under procedures. And, and if we're coming up with a memorandum of understanding and it, it says any initiatives that involve the Board of Health staff will be reviewed and approved by the Board of Health, Health as an initial step, including any potential. So, um, if some, what does it mean by an initial step, Greg? I, it's, I mean, either they're doing it or they're not, right? What am I missing?
So, you know, maybe we can add some language here. But this is really talking about new initiatives. So the new initiatives, um, would be first approved by the Board of Health before they would be acted on. So the Board of Health would be in charge of, of what those new initiatives are.
So that's under their purview, not overseen by you? Is that what it's saying?
Well, so again, Board of Health is making the, the decision whether or not to do that initiative. And then I would be involved in, in helping to make sure that that initiative is carried out.
Okay, so that is their decision. It would be under this.
So what it really speaks to is that, you know, if, if the staff or I have some ideas of what a new initiative should be, we have the responsibility of going before the Board of Health and presenting that to them for their approval.
Okay, um, so I think we've got, um, a nice, nice start here. We, we've got, um, we've opened a door for dialogue and it seems everybody is in agreement that, that we feel we should be able to come to some memorandum of understanding. Is that, does everybody feel that way? Thumbs up, nods of head, okay. Peter, I know I can't see your thumbs, but that's okay. Okay, that, that's great. So I don't think we're going to be able to hash out an MOU this evening.
No, that wasn't the plan.
Yep, but, um, so I, Paula, what, where do you, what do you see as, um, what you'd like to see as the next step?
We, we would like to come to the next, when is your next meeting?
It is the 18th.
July 18th.
Yes.
Okay, we, if possible, we would like to be on your agenda so that we can have a, hopefully a memorandum of understanding that's been combed through and possibly ready to move forward on. Because once that memorandum of understanding is in place, we can then, and we'll bring job descriptions
Right.
that night too. So hopefully what we can do is move forward with our job description and advertising once we nail down the memorandum of understanding.
Excellent. I think that would be great. Um, Greg?
Yes, sounds, sounds like a good plan.
Okay, um, any objection to that from the board? Okay, wonderful. Paula and Peter, see you in two weeks.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to, um, Water Resource, Water Task Force. Steve, are you speaking to that one or who do we have?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair. Thank you. And greetings, veteran and new, uh, Select Board members. I'll do a few things in five minutes here. Please, somebody keep me honest about that five minutes. I'll review the chronology, that how we got to where we are today with this task force, give you our current status and, and mention a few things that we've made progress on already. The chronology is that you authorized this, um, back in, uh, November of 2021 as an effort to create strategies for ensuring quality and quantity of drinking water for the next 50 years. You gave us, uh, 18 months to sort that out and make some recommendations. And you gave us a budget for startup expenses, which we're very grateful for. Uh, we spent the first two months recruiting members and identifying key issues. And we had a kickoff meeting at the end of February with 16 members and alternates, uh, representing the Select Board, the Planning Board, CPC, Open Space, Concom and Stream Team. We also had ex-officio, um, Chuck Dam, Nate DeRozier, Sue Brown, uh, several other volunteers. And importantly, uh, you gave us Sue Croft as a part-time coordinator and manager. And I, I just have to shout out, uh, to Chuck and Nate and Sue who have yet to miss a single meeting. We've been meeting every two weeks. And I, this is not in their job description, I know. And particularly Chuck, uh, and Nate, to a second, secondary degree, have been absolutely critical to us getting the knowledge we needed to get the task force moving. So deep thanks to those guys. And hopefully we'll let them have some summer evenings to themselves, uh, without us. Anyway, in the first four months, we divided into six working teams to tackle usage and demand, which would include conservation, supply and sources, which includes protecting watersheds, the effects of climate change, maintaining quality and contaminants that we need to worry about, citizen awareness and engagement, and then an all-important one of how the town can create greater responsibility, authority and accountability. As I said, we've been meeting on Zoom about every two weeks. The teams, uh, take turns giving status reports. Give me, there's a train going by my new abode. We have focused, uh, surfaced a bunch of key issues. I'm gonna mention five of them here. Because I want to be sure that these issues are on your radar, uh, not to keep you awake at night, but, uh, to be thinking about, because we're gonna be coming back with some, some, uh, suggestions and recommendations about them. They are not short-term issues. None of them has, as far as we can tell, a silver bullet. They're all going to take some long-term efforts for long-term change. The first is protecting our watersheds, which means cooperating with neighboring towns, acquiring or restricting land, uh, so that stays more natural and increasing regulatory protection. Busy night on the railroad front here. Second is finding and readying a third source of drinking water. We don't need that today, happily, but for a variety of good reasons, we're going to need to have it ready in the coming decades. Third is supporting DPW in dealing with conventional and emerging contaminants. They are the frontline, the troops, uh, guarding the, guarding the border for things like PFAS. Uh, fourth is encouraging real conservation before it's urgent and not in the sense of urgency, but in the sense of prudence. So for example, finding ways over the long term to reduce the usage of drinking water for irrigating lawns and gardens. Uh, and fifth is informing citizens more about drinking water issues without alarming them. A few things we've done to date. Number one, we received a generous $80,000 budget from Town Meeting. Thank you for everyone involved in that for fiscal year 2023. Second, we've engaged Scott Horsley, the hydrologist, essentially to pick up where he left off in 1989 with his study of water resource protection. His initial focus is on the watershed of Gravelly Pond, which is obviously our most important, more important of the two sources of drinking water. And it's particularly relevant because of plans to pave Tobacco Road and to, uh, consider maybe approve some significant residential developments that, uh, we believe are directly in the watershed for gravelly. Um, third, we helped redraft a proposed new regulation for the Board of Health to enhance public health by stronger protections from runoff, stormwater and septic runoff. This regulation is completed. It's now in front of the Board of Health. It's complicated and fairly long. But the Board of Health has been participating with us through Peter Calaruso as, as we did this and we did it at their request. So it's a good, I hope it's a good example of inter-departmental cooperation. Uh, fourth, we've aligned with Hamilton citizens who are concerned about threats to drinking water supplies, those who have private wells and those who recognize that the watershed is, you know, difficult to divide with lines on, on maps in the face of those projects I mentioned before. Fifth, we've begun our own bit of forensics work. Turns out we have some very talented people whose experience extends to engineering and water and chemistry and statistics. So some forensic works on the rising levels of contaminants, particularly the Lincoln Street well and especially sodium and the PFAS. Sixth, we've collected and begun analyzing 10 years of granular data on drinking water usage by every account, residential and otherwise, by quarter. So we can answer questions about winter versus summer use, um, distribution of use and make informed, evidence-based kind of suggestions about, uh, possible conservation moves. And finally, we've designed but not deployed yet a citizen survey to gauge and, and hopefully to build some awareness and interest in drinking water in town. I'll stop there, say thank you for all the support you've given us and particularly the participation of, uh, Ann Harrison and John Round, who've been invaluable. And I'll take any questions you have.
Wow, thank you, Steve. Um, I'm, could, could we possibly get, um, some, some written reports that, of, of what you've listed?
Surely, I'd be glad to do that. If it wasn't for, uh, presence of three or four granddaughters the last few days, you'd already have one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, let's see, uh, how about comments from the board? We'll start with Ann Harrison.
Okay, um, and, and this is a procedure thing and, and it's about transparency. And, um, I've asked for and received a copy of, of your draft of, of the Board of Health, uh, Water Protection Regulations. It was marked as not to be shared. I understand the Water Resource Protection Task Force is not a, is not a body subject to open meeting law. But I think the more people read what's going on, um, and understand where this is going, the more, that will enhance the sense of transparency in the community. I understand that it's awkward to put out something that you don't consider perfect. But, um, having, having followed other boards with this sort of problem, waiting until it's perfect and then springing something huge on the town, it does not lead to good feelings in general. And, yeah, that's all I would have.
Thank you, Ann. I know we did talk about that back in the beginning of, of when, when talking about getting the task force together, that was part of the discussion. John Round?
Yes, thank you, Becky, and, uh, thank you, Steve, for such a, such a succinct summary to try and pull together all of the details with all of the folks. And I guess there, it's, it's in excess of 20 that are involved in this. And, uh, all, all of the moving parts and to try and summarize it is certainly a challenge, but you're always up to that challenge, it seems. So, uh, I know that all, all of my fellow, uh, Select Board members will look forward to the, uh, the summary that you, that you'll send out. With regard to transparency that Ann, Ann has mentioned, it's, it's always a difficult decision as to when's the right time to put everything out there? Because if you put it out too soon, there's a lot of stuff that's never gonna really materialize. But everybody takes everything at face value as if it is. And if you're too late, uh, yeah, it's, it's looked like it's a, it's a secret type of, type of effort. And I know that specifically with regard to this, uh, drinking water protection regulation, there's a lot of stuff in there. I don't know what's going to survive from the review of all of that. I think we need to do some benchmarking with regard to that. Because I don't know what other towns are doing in this regard. I think it's important that we need to do something. But how much? I really don't know. And I know that that document covers an awful lot of ground. And, um, it, it needs, needs a little bit of work in terms of what's worked and not worked with other towns that have, I assume, got this type of regulation, um, in place that really deals with, uh, uh, various. that really deals with various analyses that are, that should be done as, as well as certain specifications with regard to, with regard to water and when, when there are buildings that are going to be, be built. But I've got to say, just in general, I'm very impressed with the team. It's moving ahead and, you know, so many of these groups, a year and a half, are they actually going to finish? I think this team's going to finish in a year and a half. It's really made a tremendous amount of progress in the first six months.
Excellent. Thank you, John. Um, Peter, I'll come back to, I'm going to go through the rest of the board first. Brian Solis.
Thank you. I want to applaud Steve for what he's done and how he's presented to this point. And obviously, there's a lot of work to be done going forward. And we do each other a disservice by trying to speculate what's going to go out there. I would just, I would just say let's, let's plod along and get them the right way the first time. And I appreciate and totally support Ann's desire of transparency. So if we can check both boxes by either alerting the public that this is going on and maybe release portions of the report as we see fit or as the board sees fit, we might be able to take care of both, inform the public as well as get a nice report out. That's just my feelings.
Thank you, Brian. Kathy Blata.
Yes, I also want to thank the, the Water Task Force team. As a, as a new board member here, I am getting up to speed on all of the great work that you've done. A couple of suggestions and then one question. I, I agree with Ann that, you know, transparency is something that we are really striving to improve here. And one suggestion might be something what's called what's in and what's out, or here's what we know and here's what we don't know slide. You know, it's a way of letting people know, you know, here's what we know, but in the same visual, right next to it, you, you can list here are the things we don't know or are working on. In that way, it, it's a way of informing the public that there, there is more work to be done. It's not final, it's not drafts. That, that's one technique that maybe would be helpful. I agree with John on the benchmarking because whatever we think we might need to do, whatever recommendations you come forward with, I'm always the type of person to ask, well, what are other towns doing? Where are the benchmarks? So I would agree that that's a great step to take. And then just a process question. Since the Select Board is the board that created this task force, I guess I'm a little surprised that, I guess I'm wondering, what is the process here? Should the recommendations be coming back to this board first before tasks are undertaken with other agencies or other towns? I'm just, like I said, just trying to get up to speed here on what the intent was by the prior board. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, and that's a very good point, yes. As I recall, recommendations are supposed to be brought back to the Select Board. And let's see, Peter Colaruso, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to answer some of those questions. I believe that Scott Horsley did a quick review of this and he said it was almost identical to, I believe it was 19 other towns, and he rattled off those towns who have existing regulations now. I don't remember the names, quite frankly. The proposal is now being reviewed by the EPA Clean Water Group and by the Department of Environmental Protection. When they're done, our intent was, the Board of Health intent was in, please, if you have a, a better way to do this, we want to make sure we were staying within the boundaries of the legal way to, you know, present this is to vote at our next meeting to have a public hearing at the end of the month. And then we, I believe we have to put that in the newspaper, put it on the web, publicize it 10 days prior. So we're working on, you know, with the cricket, getting it on the website and having a link so that anyone who is interested can look at it. I don't think we have any hope of having it be perfect. And we fully intend to address any technical or pertinent comments at the public hearing, make amendments before we adopt it and make amendments going forward as we become smarter on the whole project. So if anyone has a, a, a way that we can make this more transparent, by all means, please, please let us know. But we thought we were following the standard procedures at the Board of Health.
Thank you, Peter. Yeah, it's because this is not, the way the, the task force is set up, they're not, they don't fall under typical meeting guidelines, as I recall. Is that correct, Greg?
Well, I think, I think the guidelines are, as you suggested, Becky, that, that the task force was created by the, by the selectmen and the task force of reporting back to the selectmen before any of their recommendations go, go forward. So I, I think it's a little premature to be having the Board of Health hold a hearing, propose regulations that, that you have not seen yet. I think, I think a more detailed presentation of that proposal from the task force to you as, as the Select Board would be the next step after the task force feels it's in, it's in a, it's ready for, for that kind of a presentation. And then after that presentation, you have a discussion with the task force and yourselves and saying, yes, this is something we want to advance. We'd love, we'd like to, the avenue is for the Board of Health to take, to adopt it potentially as a, as a regulation. I mean, that's something that, that then, then would happen. I, I think something of this import probably should wait for the fall. I don't, I don't think I would hold public hearings on a regulation of this nature in the summertime. I just, I just, the optics of that, I would like to avoid.
Right.
So I, I think, but I don't think that has to delay things. I think that there's still work to be done. Have the task force get the, get the regulations in a form that they're very comfortable with to share with you. Have that happen in the next month or so. And then decide if it should continue on. And, and then the Board of Health could gear up for its, its hearings.
No, I completely agree with that. And, and back when we, and John and Ann, I'm sure, you know, you, you remember this as well. But that was, that was the understanding when we, when the task force was initiated. Ann, you wanted to say something?
Yeah. This, the, the, the subject of these regulations is often included in zoning regulations, particularly zoning for the protection of water resources. And when it's presented as a zoning ordinance, it's subject to a town meeting vote. Presenting it as, as a regulation from the Board of Health doesn't require a town meeting vote. It requires a public hearing and then it can be effective immediately. And when doing the comparisons with regulations in other towns, I'd like to know how many of them are Board of Health regulations and how many of them are presented as planning and zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. And that's, that's why, you know, when, when the task force was set up, it was set up with the intent that they would be bringing reports back to the Select Board. You all have been doing just yeoman's work, a lot of it. But I, I, I think that it needs to be the original intent where it was a, a group put together by the Select Board falls under the Select Board. And the Select Board should be brought updates and, and intentions. Kathy Blata?
Yeah, just a quick suggestion because it sounds like there was, there's a little bit of a disconnect here somewhere. So one thing that might be helpful is if the task force, when you, when you come back and give the Select Board the presentation, maybe just do a high-level timeline of your entire process, what you envision, so that we can review not only what you've already done, but what you think, you know, the next steps are to complete your work. Okay, because you've got your team set up. It can just be a high-level milestone timeline. I, I've shared one with Greg previously, so he's, he knows what, what I've, what's probably in my head right now. But it really helps with communication and helps people stay on track and keep, keeps those expectations aligned. So just a, just a thought.
That's good. Thank you, Kathy. Peter?
Yes, to answer Ann's question, I believe those 19 communities, it was entirely the Board of Health for the exact same reasons that you pointed out. So there are 19 in Massachusetts, I believe, that are already approved and there's several more that are underway. This whole confusion is solely and 100% my fault. The, the Massachusetts, the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust gave this document to the Board of Health in July, before there even was a Water Resource Commission. And I looked at it, they asked us to please adopt it. And I looked at it and I knew that while we have very, very smart people, present company excluded on the board, this was technology that we were not familiar with. So we were kind of hemming and hawing, you know, how do we get help on this? At that time, Steve had called me and says, hey, I'm going to try to put together a committee on clean water. Would you be interested in participating? So I said, sure. And at that time, I asked the Board of Health to table voting on the proposal and we could get some free expert advice. So that's how this kind of intermingled. So the, the whole thing was being considered long before the, the Freshwater Committee here was even formed. And that's where the confusion, I think, came in as far as, you know, reporting and so forth.
I'm not muted. Okay, thank you, Peter. Steve?
Thank you. These are valuable points and I have three quick points in response. First is, I am happy and, and I'm sure there are other task force members who would be happy to give regular updates, to include you in the work plans. Anything else you want to see? We have no interest in being untransparent or secretive. Secondly, you do have two of your members on the task force. So you have, and the reason we did that with planning and Select Board was obviously so that you'd have an immediate line of communication and, and updating. So, you know, please turn to them first as well. And third, as Peter has just explained, these aren't recommendations we're making. These, this is advice we're giving based on a little bit of expertise from some of the task force members and a lot of research by some task force members and by Scott Horsley to fill a gap that the Board of Health felt. So it probably falls in some gray area between a formal recommendation and a, and a assistance on request to another board. But I apologize for not considering that it could be seen as a recommendation. And Ann, I, I commit to erring on the other side whenever possible in the future.
Thank you, Steve. I will say we have stopped doing our liaison updates. It's on tonight's agenda to discuss getting that going again. So there is by no means fault on one side alone or one set of shoulders. There's, there's, there's plenty of that to go around. So thank you. Ann?
I'd like to recommend that before this topic comes in front of this board again, that as soon as possible, you make the draft available to the whole of the Select Board. I, I understand that, that there's, it's a lot easier to understand if it's a single page with a few boxes and arrows. But for me, the devil is often in the details. And, and boxes and arrows don't tend to align some of that. Thank you. But so my recommendation is that as soon as possible, you get the full document to every member of the Board of Selectmen and, and anyone else that you think has a, has a reasonable expectation of understanding this, which might include, say, the, no, the planning board, for instance.
Could, could I ask, is it more appropriate for the Board of Health since it's their proposed regulation that we're contributing to, to, to take charge of circulating it? The reason I put don't circulate was just to respect the Board of Health, who is kind of our client here. And as I said, that may have been a complete misinterpretation of things, but I, I think it's more their hunt right now than it is ours. And we have plenty of other things to hunt down at, at the task force.
Well, Peter, before you jump in, Peter, one moment, please. What concerns me, thank you, Ann, what concerns me with that, Steve, is that the, again, to go back to the, what the, the task force was brought together by the Select Board or, or it was originated under the Select Board. And, and while I think it's great if other boards and committees are asking for advice, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that going forward as an offshoot of a task force put together by the Select Board at this time. Does that, do you understand what I'm saying? And does that make sense?
So you'd prefer we stay in a narrow lane until you tell us otherwise? I understand that.
Yes, I, I, I think that, that, you know, let's focus on what, what the Select Board has asked. And I think that it would be reasonable and logical for other boards and committees to come to the Select Board with those requests, the requests of recommendations by the task force.
Good process makes good substance. I agree.
We tried. Now, Peter, thank you, Steve. Peter, before I go to you, Chuck Dam did have his hand up. Chuck?
Yep, I, I just had one question. I think Peter mentioned that somebody at EPA and DEP was reviewing the document. I just wanted to know who, you know, just in case they have overlap with our permits and our registration on the drinking water and wastewater sides. I'd be interested to know who's, who's reviewing it. And then there's, there's other things that I could go into. I, I did get a copy with Ann on the, on it. I have several comments, but I think I can save those for another time.
And I'm going to jump in here. I'm going to jump in here. Chuck, thank you. And this is, this is another instance, I think, of things, the, the cart being put before the horse. And that's, you know, if, if Chuck is put in a situation that is not a good situation or one where he wasn't asked about. This, this is where I think even more importantly, the task force has to stay in its lane with this information. And Peter, I'll let you speak now because I think that probably goes back to you.
Okay, well, Chuck, I don't have a mommy there in my office. Can I get that to you tomorrow or Thursday? Is that all right?
That's perfectly fine. I just want to make sure. I, I have personally reached out to my contacts and, you know, they certainly have opinions. But again, I can, I can save that for another day. So I just want to make sure. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
All right. And, and second is, is Chuck has made, was on the committee and made comments all along and will certainly honor, um, any other, you know, comments and suggestions you may have. Um, and Greg or whomever, um, how, how do we, I, I have no problem distributing this to whomever you want to distribute it. But how do we go about doing that? Do I have, do we have to publicize it on the, in the town paper or can we distribute it prior to doing that? Can somebody answer that from Greg? Are you aware of the procedure?
Well, so, um, you know, from, from where I said, the, the task force and its subcommittees are, um, are subject to the open meeting law. So that you are reviewing drafts and you have minutes. Um, and any of the documents that you're working on as a subcommittee are, are public. And so we can, we can add these to the task force website page as a, as a starting point and, and make them available. We can, you know, once they're on the website, I can easily have staff give them to, you know, like the planning board and to the Select Board, et cetera. So I think, I think that's a good way to proceed.
Okay, so we're not breaking any, any laws by doing it that way? We don't have to put it in the paper first or anything like that?
No, not as, not as a working document. When it gets to the, to a hearing, um, then we have to, you know, get proper notice about the hearing and and there's procedures there. But, but as a, as a committee work or subcommittee work, it can, it can stay as working documents.
All right. So I, I have a copy. Who should I, I could send a copy ten, tonight. Who should I send it to? You? You or somebody in your office?
Um, why don't you send it to me and Debbie and to Sue and then I'll work with Sue and Debbie to make sure.
Sue has a copy, I believe.
Who has it?
Sue has it already.
So that's fine. I can get it from her and we can get it posted and, and go from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And I just, you know, don't mean to be coming down on any people on the task force. I know you all have just put your heads down and really gotten busy with it. But I do want to make sure that everybody on the task force does understand that this is under the Select Board. And, and everything should be brought back before the Select Board. We're not, we're not in a, a rush to try to get any regulations passed within the next couple of months. This is to determine what needs to be done and then go forward in a very thoughtful, open and legally correct manner.
I don't think you can make that point any more clear, at least to me. Thank you. I do have a question though. I think I raised six or maybe a dozen serious substantive policy questions in my update. And I'll be happy to supply those in print. I would really appreciate some feedback on the substance as well as all this useful feedback on the process.
That's, that's great, Steve. If you could just forward that to Greg and then Greg, forward to Greg and Debbie, rather. And then they can pass it on to the rest of us.
Excellent.
Thank you very much, Steve. Thank you, Peter.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
You too. Thank you all. Okay, um, I'm hoping that everybody would be amenable to allowing the consent agenda to move up next as we have, um, Lisa Bonneville here for the benches and that is on, on the consent agenda. Does anybody have any objections to that? Okay, well, we'll do, um, we have the approval of the minutes of June twenty first and the approval of the three bench donations for the longevity bench project. Does anybody want anything taken out of the consent agenda? Or has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes and send in any, if any, amendments?
Uh, just a process question, Becky?
Yes, Kathy?
Yeah, I did have a, a change to the minutes. I submitted them to Greg and Debbie. So as long, and Debbie responded that she would make the change. So other than that, I'm fine.
It's good. It's as long as they're de minimis and not substantive.
Um, no. So this one was not, um, I, I didn't feel it was quite representing my, what I said at the meeting. So I don't know that I would call that de minimis, but it's not a huge deal. I'm, this is my lack of experience in, uh, municipal meeting minutes, uh.
Yep. Okay. And did you, okay, so, um,
So those were, those were, those were fine. I mean, she was
Okay, okay.
She was, she was just clarifying
Okay.
A, a statement that she made that, um, the, the minutes didn't quite reflect, um, the full tenor of what she had said.
Okay, wonderful. Um, that's the case. Um, is, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the approval of minutes of June twenty one, twenty twenty two and the approval of three bench donations, longevity bench project, Inc.?
They'll move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Wonderful. Thank you. Moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by John Round. Roll call vote. Brian Solacy. You're muted, but I saw you say yes. John Round?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Blata?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. Lisa, would you like to comment?
Well, I'd like to thank you very much. Um, I think you've got my, um, extensive packet, um, representing the entire board and our three most current donors. And, uh, they'll be delighted to get the news tomorrow. Um, so I don't know that I need to reiterate anything. I didn't know. Uh, it sounds like there aren't any questions. I, I did leave off the fact, um, that Bayon also took a good look at the, uh, Proctor Street. Okay.
Oh, that was in there. I saw, I saw. Bayon.
Okay, well, if no one has any questions, then I just thank you very much.
Before you leave, Anne Harrison has her hand up.
Okay. The thanks are going in the wrong direction. We should thank you for the effort that you're putting in to improving the lives of everyone who walks in Manchester. Um, the benches are very attractive and, and well placed. And I can't imagine how much work you have put into it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And they are just, it's such a welcoming, um, visual for the town. It, it, it just speaks to community. Thank you, Lisa.
Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, so next on the agenda, we have board policies, next steps. And what we meant, um, Brian and Kathy, prior to your coming on to the board, um, Anne and Eli, mostly Anne, were very laboriously slogging through board policies that desperately needed updates. Um, and we'd been making our way through that, uh, in, in meetings, uh, regular meetings. But it seems that we might do better and just want to pull the board on this. If we were to, um, possibly do a Thursday evening meeting or something, some evening where we just give, we say we're going to do an hour and leave it at that, something along those lines. Um, thoughts?
Um, if I can give a little more background, um,
Please do.
When I was, I guess I've been on the board for six or seven months. A question came up about how to prorate water bills in the case of someone who's had a water leak. And, um, Eli said, oh, there's a policy on that. And there's a what? And the policy manual was found. It was in hard copy. Um, and it had thirty-six different policies, starting with, in nineteen seventy-nine. There are thirty-six named policies. There are another half dozen, um, that were just sort of shoved in and don't have names and numbers. Um, so that has been digitized. Um, and we've started going over from the oldest to the newest. Many of the policies, um, are, should be personnel policies. They predate the, uh, position of town administrator and, um, don't reflect the way the town should be run now. Um, some just aren't followed. Um, some, uh, we, we have adopted a half do- we have adjusted and adopted a half dozen and moved another, maybe eight or nine that we either, that don't make any difference anymore, um, or that should be personnel policies. What we are currently considering, um, are policies on the use of the town flagpoles, um, policies on appointments. That turns out to have, our, our current policy says that people will not serve more than two, three-year terms on, and, and various numbers of small, shorter terms on boards. Um, which turns out we've not been following and we would lose a lot of very valuable people if we were to enforce it. Um, there's a policy on paid position appointments that's, uh, paid, paid position openings, um, that's a little bizarre. Um, and, and another on preplacement physicals and, uh, unlawful possession and use and sale of drugs and alcohol. So I will get those that are under consideration to you. Uh, I will get the full packet, which is large and boring. But we'll show you where we end, and, um, a separate list of the policies that we have approved. I thought it would be better to explain how we got here before I sent you this massive amount of text. Um, with, uh, you know, what, uh, so, um, other things, yes, there are also policies that we don't have. It's hard to believe. Um, we don't have a policy on sewer connections. We don't have a policy on election signs in public places. We don't have, uh, apparently there's a need for a policy on storage of materials. So I suggest that, that we take up a mix of the ones that we've been considering and a couple of new ones. Um, and, and try to get this. My goal in starting this is to reduce the policies, the length of the individual policies and the number of policies to something that could be handed to new, um, newly elected selectmen, newly affected, newly hired department heads, um, with the expectation that they will be read rather than filed. So that's what's, what that was about. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. And just to let, to, um, let Brian and Kathy know that, um, if, if you don't have any any, uh, uh, policies, then you might want to get at least the water and sewer rate one because that's what we're working on next time we meet as well. Um, one of the things on the agenda. Um, so to that, that said, um, how do people feel about trying to meet on a Thursday? We did that a few times before with the last board. And that was because the agendas seemed to get pretty full and we are uh, somewhere around halfway, maybe a little more, and it's been two and a half hours. Would, would a Thursday afternoon work, Kathy?
Um, yes, as long, I could, I definitely support the work. I understand how important this is. Um, I could definitely support a Thursday afternoon, late afternoon, um, on the fourteenth, but, um, not on the twenty-first. I could support that on the twenty-eighth. So my, my next couple of weeks is just a little bit unusually busy. Um, but I, I, I agree in principle. Just.
Right. Um, Anne, how many, how many, I know there are a lot. Roughly how many more do you see that we need to get through and add?
Cause Oh, there are the five that we need to add and we are currently, um, about halfway.
Okay. All right. And the, the other, I mean,
Uh, some of them are very easy and some of them, like the appointments policy, turn out to be a little more complicated and, and sometimes they just need thinking about, but it never has been important enough to keep us up after ten thirty. So I would, I would welcome.
Well, then maybe what we can do, if we, if we say we'll do a Thursday for an hour, we put in what is perceived to be items that can fit in that timeframe. Or is an hour just silly?
I don't, I don't think an hour is silly, but, um, what I've been presenting, um, to date is a two-column, um, yeah, document with the old language on one side. At the top, uh, on the, on the right-hand side, a comment on what I think ought to be done. Either change the language, delete it, move it to personnel policies, move it someplace else. And I will try to get those out by the Monday before. No, I'm not going to do that. No, the third. I have the wrong month on my calendar, so it's not going to work. Um, but I will try to get these to you in, you know, several, several days before, um, we have the discussion.
And along those lines, um, Eli had been helping you. Um, is it, would it be helpful to have another set of eyes or not? Or what, what would you like?
I would absolutely like another set of eyes.
Okay, so what I'm going to ask is it, instead of at this precise moment, but if, um, and Kathy, you're already committed to dispatch. So that's going to be a big time for you, take for you. Uh, John, you're on Water Resource, the task force. And that's a pretty big ask. Do you, but I would say between Brian and John, either of you able to do that?
Brian? I, I, I could probably still, but Brian, how's your timeline?
Excuse me, John. I'm, my, my issue, and I have many, is that I still could probably get another two or two months, ten weeks of zoning board that's meeting.
Ah, yes, that's right. Okay. Good point.
Going one day a month.
Okay.
Um, to that closing up very, we close public comment a couple of meetings, but then we go to, uh, deliberations. So that's, it's gonna be, I, I just wish I could. I just, I'm trying to, I'm spread too thin as it is.
That's okay. All right. John, are you able to?
Yeah. I can. And nail, and hit, hit the nail on the head in that this is, is one of those items. It's important, but it doesn't have a specific deadline. So it just never gets pushed along. And if, if we wind up, uh, you know, however many policies we can pull together and then one Thursday a month for, say, two or three months, we can finish this out. It, it'll just depend upon how many policies we can pull together and feel that, hey, an hour is enough time. But I, I, I think an hour is a reasonable amount of time because we really don't want to have another evening that, uh, is taking four hours of our time. Um, these meetings are enough. So I think, uh, I think that's a good approach. And I don't know that we want to set a, set a Thursday right now or wait until some emails get exchanged?
Yes, and I was actually going to suggest that and also because it is summer. So, um, and I think that, that I just don't want this to fall off the tracks. Um, so maybe if, if, um, you and Anne, Ja- John and Anne, you two talk about when would be good for you all to meet, that would be where we jump off for dates to follow up on that. Um, that way you all are meeting when it works best for you.
If I could could, we may save ourselves a phone call. The thirteenth would be. A great deal better for me than later in the month.
A Wednesday?
I'm sorry, the fourteenth, the fourteenth.
So are you saying you'd like us to go ahead and have a meeting set for the fourteenth?
If if. That would be improved by domestic tranquility.
Okay. All right, well, why don't we do this? John and Anne, you talk about when you can get together and if everybody would email me independently. But C.C., Greg and Debbie, your choice of. A Thursday for July and a Thursday for August. And if we could try, is five thirty too early for people if we did a five thirty to six thirty? Okay, well, go ahead and email me if you think those date works, that we can do something in those timeframes and. And. We can get to go back through Greg and Debbie on that.
Yep.
Sound good?
Yep.
Okay, good. Next update, next on the agenda is liaisons. And for Brian and Kathy, this is something we used to do and and we we kind of divvied up liaison somewhat. In the beginning. And what we used to do is. Briefly. Just have a synopsis essentially of whatever you are. Whatever boards or committees you're listening to to make sure that the board has. An overview of what's most important. At the meeting you attend. So I would like to reinstate that. And starting with the next meeting, the June eighteenth meeting. Again, it's not a long thing, it's a very just an overview of what. Your board or committee is working on at that time. Greg, do you have a copy of the liaison, what who's who's got what? If not, I can go back and find it, but.
Yeah, I don't have it with me right now, but I, yeah, I've got it in my notes.
Okay, if you would at some point, you know. Just just send those out again to make sure everybody knows who's who's on what.
Yep.
That would be helpful. Okay. Did I make that clear? Does somebody need more information on the liaison updates? Okay, great. Next up, we have contract approvals. Starting with Chief of Police. And. Everybody had an opportunity to go over those, correct? All right. I guess Greg, do you want to tee this one up?
Sure, so Todd's first three years have come to a close. And so a new contract. Is needed to to have him continue on. He is very willing to continue. And I believe you are willing to have him continue, though there are some important. Important goals and objectives that you have outlined with with the chief. I think those have been productive negotiations that you've had over the last couple of weeks here. So the the new contract is. Is sort of a one plus, in other words, it's a one year contract. With the option of year two and a year three, assuming that we continue to make good progress. On a number of very important goals. Just to highlight a few of those. They include. Making sure we are cultivating a culture in the department that is. Respectful and and inclusive of of all employees as well as certainly to the residents. Another important goal is with the decision to move dispatch to make sure that that transition is is successful. Over the next few months to a year. And working in collaboration with Fire Chief and myself and and you as a board. Other items include. Making sure that we are training our not only our leaders, but our rank and file. Important. Measures in policing with with an emphasis on on community policing and making sure that it is. A philosophy that all of our our officers follow and incorporate in their everyday. Duties and interactions with the public and with each other. So those are some of the highlights of of your goals. And the chief was has been very. Receptive to those and willing to continue to to work on them. We've had a had a number of successes over the last few years. Certainly maintaining accreditation. The department was received its first accreditation and has been recertified. So that's an important milestone for the department that has gone well. Other. Work that the chief has done, certainly getting the SRO position up and running with the school that has been well received. Need to keep working on. Really evaluating and fine tuning, but is a good. A good new effort that I think, as I say, the school. Committee and and school community, I think, has appreciated to a large degree. The chief is also obviously a longstanding member of the community and and. Working for the town, I mean, it offers quite a bit of insight and help to other departments. So that's another very positive that we have going forward and and we'll continue with that. So, as I say, negotiations have have gone well. You've agreed to this structure and the chief has agreed to it. We've outlined those those goals, which are are front and center for all of us and making sure that. As with my contract, which we'll talk about after this, making sure we do quarterly updates and quarterly reviews with you so that. You can be assured that the progress on these goals are being made. And again, I think that's an important factor and and shows support on your. On your part and and helps us as department heads, as so speak. Certainly in Todd's case as a department leader that he. He has clear directives to follow and that the expectations are clear and and he has a a clear roadmap going forward. So I think that that summarizes. The 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 pay structure mimics which what the other police officers have received in their last contract. So it it follows that same. Low coals, but allows a bit of a higher, the gradual increase in. What is known as the Quinn Quinn bill, the education incentive. So it mimics those same rubrics that were used in the in the police union contract. So again, that was something that was acceptable to the chief and and to you going forward, I believe. So. I can go into more details, but I think that's a good summary.
Thank you. Yes, that was a that was a very good summary, Greg. Thank you. I I do have a few questions. On the contract as I was looking at it and I'll I'll go around to the board after, if that's all right. One typo, page three, under C, secondary outside employment. One, two, three, four. Seventh sentence, last word. And I'm I'm not sure, is it supposed to be activates or is that supposed to be activities?
I'm sorry, we're wasn't getting there quite as fast as you were talking.
I know, it's page three.
Yep.
At the top of the page under C.
Yes.
And it's. And I mean, I didn't know if it was, you know, if it should be activities or activates. It's the seventh sentence down.
Which outside employment activates, activities, that should be activities. Yep.
Sometimes legal terms do it a little different and I don't can't pretend to know that.
Yep, no, that should be activities. Good catch.
Okay. Then on number on page four, number five. And it talks about calendar year, is it? And I I know we went back and forth with some items fiscal year, some calendar year.
Right, so we do do vacation time on a calendar year basis for all staff.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. And these are all tiny things, but I I did want to ask on page six, under number nine. Retirement contributions. In terms of. Availability of vehicle, what does that mean? Contributions as it resulting from the availability and use of such. I I just didn't recall that last time, but.
So it's it's. It's a detail that. Has to be worked out with counter retirement. And that if. If that is considered compensation from counter retirement, then the chief would have to be making a contribution based on that.
Oh, okay, good, thank you.
So it's something that the the chief works out with with counter retirement.
Okay. And then on the. Page seven, under number fifteen, where we do evaluations. I'd actually like to, it's it's we have both, we have the quarterly ones. Should we have? Sort of a timeframe for those as opposed to just quarterly in.
Want to put the months in? You want to put the actual months in? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I would.
So I mean, that's that's fine.
But that's why that's what I thought, but I don't know what the rest of the board would think of that. I just I just want to make sure that we have, it just doesn't go by.
Right, so I was making the assumption that with the July start, it's it's every three months.
Right. So could we just put in there then September twenty two, December? Twenty two and March twenty three?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I just think if we have clear dates. Okay. That's it for me, so. Why don't we go to? Brian? Any comments on that?
I think we discussed it, I think we covered everything. Obviously, the legalese has been run by legal, so I'm good with it.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
I have nothing further to add.
Excellent, Anne?
Neither do I.
John Round.
One item, page one, duties, the first line. You put in the acronym M P D, you never define it above, it's never used again. I think you ought to just say Police Department because I think that's it's obviously Manchester Police Department, just say Police Department.
Yep, yep.
Well done, John. Okay, then. I suppose we need a motion to ratify the new contract for the Chief of Police, Todd J. Fitzgerald. For one year. And do we put the dates on that, Greg? It would be July one.
Correct, yes.
Twenty twenty two through thirtieth of June twenty twenty three. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, yep.
Okay, motion, John Round.
Okay.
Second.
Second, Anne Harrison, roll call, vote. Brian Solacey?
Yes.
Kathy Balata?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jake's votes, yes. Thank you, Chief Fitzgerald.
I know the the chief is here, I don't know if the chief would like to make a comment or two, but.
No, I'm here, sorry, my camera's not working, I'm at home, but yeah, thanks for the conversation the other day and the last couple, over the last couple of weeks. And I appreciate your time and I look forward to moving forward.
Excellent. As do we. See you around town.
See you later.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we have. Greg Fettersfield on contract. And. I do you want to? Do you want to tee this up, Greg, or do you want me just to go through this or?
Either way, I'm happy to give a quick summary if that would be helpful.
Yes, please. For anybody in the audience.
Sure, sure. So I I've 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 had the honor to serve the town for the last nine years. And I would welcome the opportunity to to continue for for another three year contract. So I I welcome that opportunity and appreciate it. This proposed contract for the next three years is is very similar to the existing contract. It. Main changes are it provides for. For quarterly reviews, like we just talked about with the chief, and we can put in the dates as well. On that, it's allows for the full three years, the last one was a two plus one. And this calls for sort of standard colas. But it does have a provision in there that if inflation factors continue to. Push and and if the majority of union contracts has has this as a as a higher. Cola in years two and three, then then that would give us an opportunity to revisit my colas. So other than that, it's 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 like I say, very similar to to my existing contract. Except for those few changes that I just just outlined. And. I would be honored if you were. Inclined to to ratify this for this evening.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, the comments that I have starting off. Sorry about that, I'm in my my parents' house and. People have just got back from winning trivia. So the very first thing I saw in the very beginning, this agreement is the the date, says twenty fourth of June twenty nineteen.
Yeah, I missed that one. Okay, yes.
So that was it, and then when you go on page three, under number five, salary. You originally, there was A, B and C. And wait a minute, no, I jumped the gun, sorry, one, two, three, page. Three, number eight, under vacation, sick and other leave.
I consolidated those two, so instead of just separating out sick time, I just said, everything follows the handbook.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because it seemed like you were getting shortchanged on something there.
No, I just consolidate, it seemed it seemed simpler just to reference the handbook.
Well, that's what I was wondering, because it it didn't actually state it. I saw the reference, but it didn't state exactly what it what the previous B have been. But in terms of vacation cyclic, where is that documented? Do you, is that?
So the contract says, you know, the four weeks of vacation. And then and then all other leave is per the the employee handbook.
Okay. Then. In terms of number thirteen and mileage reimbursement. It said reimbursement for expenses should be submitted to the chairman of the select board. Is there any specific time when that gets submitted or is that just? Specific time when that gets submitted or is that just?
So. Yeah, it's so it it used to say at the end of each month, which we have not been following. I I typically do it at the end of the year. If you want to do it twice a year, that's fine, but once a month seemed. Unnecessary.
It it does, but I do think it should be in there specified, whether it's. Biannually or annually.
Yeah. Why don't we say at least annually?
At least annually. That works. And that's it for me. It really wasn't anything big. So. Thank you. Let's start with Kathy Bellata.
Nothing further from me.
Excellent. John Round.
Yeah, so I just I just had a question under salary and the inflation question, Greg. So. The increases here are two and a half percent. And if the colas in these various. Signed union contracts, and to be honest, I don't know how many different union contracts we have and what those numbers are. I'm just kind of interested in maybe we could quantify this in some way or say it it should be equivalent to what those contracts are, but. A lot of them have. Colas that vary from year to year. And maybe you're referring to this specific year and whatever these union contracts are. It's 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 a little open-ended.
Well, so so it is a little open-ended because we don't have those new contracts.
Okay.
So we, this is, we we're just starting the last year of the contract for most most of the unions.
Right.
And. And so all this is saying is that. You agree to reopen negotiations, but you I'm not. Locking you in to what you have to agree to. I'm just I'm just seeking the opportunity to to have a conversation with you and you can you can turn me down. But I'd like the opportunity to to make a case if. You know, if if inflation runs at eight percent for the next three years. Two and a half is going to be hard to. To to. Stay stay up, stay abreast with what's happening.
How how many union contracts is the town engaged in?
So we have. One, two, three, four.
Four.
Yes.
And 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 they're all coming up in two thousand twenty-three?
Three of them are.
Oh, okay.
One is coming up in twenty and twenty-four.
I was just thinking about that.
Well, it doesn't. It doesn't lock anything in. It just asks for dialogue. Or the opportunity to have a dialogue.
Yep, and a dialogue contingent on. The fact that the numbers might change from two and a half percent. And if they don't, why then that dialogue really doesn't happen, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's right.
All, John?
Yep, I I think so. Just wanted to know what was going on in Greg's mind.
That's sure.
Anne?
I think the contract is very generous to the town. And we are getting more than we're paying for. So I have no questions.
I agree. Okay, in that case, may I have a motion to ratify the new contract? For Greg Fettersfield, Town Administrator for the. Term of or the. Yeah, term July one, twenty twenty-two until June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by John Round, seconded by Anne Harrison. John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jakes says yes with great thanks. To Greg. Greg, did you want to say anything?
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate. Again, the opportunity to keep to keep plugging away here. And we'll keep we'll keep trying to. Move the ball forward.
Okay, thank you. And next we have the Town Administrator's report.
Okay. Quick update on the Chewbacca Road. As you know, Hamilton is pursuing. Paving. Repaving its section and and paving the current section that is that is gravel. You've reviewed those plans. You had some comments. The town has agreed to seek a truck exclusion. On the road and to install permanent speed tables rather than just seasonal speed bumps. So those were two. Two requests that you had made, which they agreed to, which was which was good. They. They don't. They don't want to do no salt, but they they are agreeable to a low-salt application. And they have completed their permitting process, including new permits from. Their CONCON and also. MIPA, the state. Review process has signed off on the project as well. So they are are getting closer. To moving forward with that. And I I know that there are concerns about. The additional traffic and the potential pollution that that additional traffic might bring. But I think. Some of these steps taken with the speed tables and truck exclusions and the fact that there are shorter routes, particularly going south, that I. Optimistic that we will not see that. That increase in traffic in in our section of the road will remain gravel. So it won't be. It won't be paved all the way. So that's where that's where things stand with Chewbacca Road. We are just closing out the fiscal year twenty-two. Closes officially June June thirtieth. And additional paperwork, bill pay, etc., etc. will take us through the middle of July. But we we are, as I said earlier, under the transfers, we are closing the year out in the black with with revenues higher than than anticipated. And some expenditures lower. Overall expenditures are lower than budgeted. Obviously, we had a number of transfers that you approved earlier this evening where certain lines went over original projections, but. More lines were under terms of total dollars.
Greg, I'm going to quick interrupt just a minute and I apologize. Moms X, I will come back to you at the end of Greg's Administrator's report. Go ahead.
So we're also obviously underway now with the new fiscal year, the fiscal twenty-three budget, which voters approved at the annual town meeting. And. It will be a challenging year just because we, you know, inflation has continued to to run higher than than that budget anticipated. So energy costs, chemical costs. And higher construction costs are going to be a bit of a challenge. We're trying to anticipate those. And make some adjustments in the budget where we can to to make sure we have some dollars that we can use for some of those higher costs. And FY FY twenty-four budget, which will will start up in the fall. Most likely be more challenging, given the given. The economic uncertainties that we're facing right now. So that that warrants careful watching as we go forward. Concerning the water and sewer, at your next meeting, we will have you formally set the new rates for water and sewer for for the new fiscal year. Looking at a three percent increase for both water and sewer based on the budgets that that voters approved for those those two enterprise operations. So as enterprise. Enterprise funds, they rely on their own revenues that they generate through the user fees. So that's why we we set those rates every year. And then lastly, just a a quick update on the forty B. The ZBA has has two more hearings scheduled. So assuming that they wrap up at the end of of July, then once they close the. Public portion of the hearing. They will then enter into a deliberative phase. They have forty days to render their decision. And once they render that decision, then it is up to the developer or other. Affected parties to decide whether or not it gets appealed. To the to the state's HAC, the Housing. Advisory Commission. And. My prediction would be that regardless of the decision the ZBA reaches, it's it's going forward, appeal and. Likely to the courts after that. Obviously, crystal balls are not very clear, but. I I. I suspect that's what will be happening. So those are the four things I wanted to to go over.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Moms X, I just need to confirm that this, what you wish to say or ask pertains to. Our Town Administrator's report, because the time for comments on non-agenda items was upon the opening of the meeting. So that you have to stick with that. And please state your name and address.
Sure thing, Becky. It's Christina Delicio and Sixth Lincoln Avenue. So I just wanted to clarify on the Chewbacca Road. So at the last couple meetings, we talked about the. Appearance of maybe appealing the Hamilton's. CONCON's. Decision. So I just wanted to, as commissioners of the. Water Commission, so could you speak to your position of why you have not appealed that decision? And. What your position is of? Why you're not appealing or have you appealed the decision of the Hamilton CONCON? Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. And did? Did you say, yes, you did state your address? Okay, thank you. Greg, do you want to? Respond to that?
So I think, you know. Your last session, you you talked about that possibility. There was no decision to to go forward with an appeal. You asked for some of those additional. Stipulations for the project, the the truck exclusion, trying to slow traffic down. It asked for no salt. They agreed to low salt. So I think with those, my my sense is that you were. More as comfortable as as you could be with with the project. And that. You know, appealing to the state, you know, the locals, the state has a pretty high. Difference to to state review and I mean, local review unless there was some. Large error in that review. And and usually the local regs are are more stringent than the state, the state regs. That doesn't mean you. Could not appeal, but I'm not sure. It would result in a in a. In a more restricted permit.
And to to just. Kind of go on along with that, you know, they, given that the town. Did did come to us with a a an option and it was voted down in town meeting, I think that we would be looked upon even more unfavorably. That's that's my. My perspective. Anybody else on the board want to speak to that? Okay. There we go. Thank you for popping on, Christina. That's great. I am going to ask for a motion to go into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares and not to return to open meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay, moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by John Round. Roll call vote. Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jakes, Jakes, whomever I am, says yes as well. So thank you very much. Debbie, have a good night. And JB, if you would sign out, that would be wonderful. All right. All right, Greg, you want to go ahead and remove JB?
There they go. Okay.
Hey, and are are we locked?
I will do that.
And the recording stopped.
And thank you.